Gavel the meeting to order. The Board will meet in regular session on Tuesday, February twenty-one, two thousand seventeen, at nine AM in the courthouse meeting room number two, northeast corner, third floor, with three members present. At this time, could you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A notice to the public, Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for discussion. You're requested to approach the microphone, state your name for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. The normal process on any agenda item is for the chairperson to read the item from the agenda. The Board has given an opportunity to comment on the issue and/or place a motion on the floor. An opportunity for discussion may be presented at which time the public may participate in a roll call vote. And a roll call vote will follow. Pardon me, I was looking down the sheet and reading at the same time. First one, item number one, approval or amendment of the agenda. The Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the agenda as printed.
May I second?
It's been moved and seconded that the agenda be printed or be approved as printed. Is there any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Solacek.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Okay, item number two. This is to recognize our, some of our staff. From time to time, we have some who meet the five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty-year level, and it's always good to take that a little bit of time. We do appreciate the staff. They do a really good job. People out in the community do not understand the quality of people that we have working here, so we always want to do that. I don't believe Tom is here this morning, though. Tom Heil, Sheriff's Office, has been there for fifteen years. He's gonna miss out on us giving this recognition, certification to him, but we'll make sure that he gets it. And if you see him, congratulate him on his time of service and we'll go from there. Item number three, then, two thousand sixteen-seventeen budget amendment, public hearing. At the public hearing, any resident may present objections to or arguments in favor of any part of the amendment to the current two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget. And Deanne, were there any written comments?
No, we did not receive any.
Okay, zero. And zero written comments, questions, or objections on file to the county auditor and recorder's office. And we have how many individuals attending here?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Do we have any people who would, at this time, have anything that they would like to present in regard to this? We're going to have more opportunities here as we go along this morning. We have the meeting is, we're spending a lot of time discussing this and pointing out how our budget is sitting and how we intend to work with that. So we have zero individuals at this point. Then, if there's no discussion by the Board, the Chair would entertain a motion then to close this public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we close this public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Roll call vote, please.
Solacek.
Yes.
Patton.
Nine oh four.
This is at nine oh four.
Patton.
Okay. Pardon me.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried. Item number four is Resolution two thousand seventeen dash zero zero fourteen and its two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget amendment. The proposed two thousand sixteen-seventeen budget amendment was published in the Marshall Town Times Republican and the State Center Mid-Iowa Enterprise on February nine, two thousand seventeen. And Deanne, were there any written comments in regard to this?
No.
Okay, zero. And we still have sixteen people?
We gained one.
Gain one, seventeen.
We have seventeen.
And are there any people who wish to address this budget amendment? Budget amendments are where there's a little bump in the road somewhere and we need a little extra money. We cannot spend more than what we had in our budget. This will not change the levy at all. If we're off a few hundred dollars to a thousand dollars or a couple thousand dollars, this comes from our reserves. So it doesn't change, doesn't change the tax requests at all. But it's the law. If we don't do this, and we ask for this in public so people understand what we're doing, then we're violating the law. So this is why we're doing it. It seems like it's trivial, but it's not. It's part of the whole process. So going on, now therefore be it resolved by the Marshall County Board of Supervisors that the two thousand sixteen-seventeen county budget amendment be adopted and the county auditor and recorder be authorized to certify and file the budget amendment as published and presented at the public, at the hearing, dated at Marshalltown, Iowa, this twenty-first day of February two thousand seventeen. If there's no further discussion, the Chair would entertain a motion.
The only discussion I would add to this is this is something that pretty much occurs on an annual basis in February. We do it at this time, so we've got adequate time to notify the public that there will be an amendment when we get later on in the year. There is not sufficient time to get the publication out, the notification, and make the adjustments. Like Bill said, this does not increase property taxes. This comes out of our operating reserves. That being said, Mr. Chairman, I would motion that we adopt Resolution number two thousand seventeen dash zero zero one four for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget amendment.
May I second?
It has been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution two thousand seventeen fourteen. Roll call vote, please.
Solacek.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
And Thompson.
Yes, I was jumping ahead for me.
That's fine, I wasn't talking last time, so.
Okay.
We're good. Motion approved. Okay, then moving on then to the Resolution two thousand seventeen, two thousand fifteen, reapportioning of funds for FY two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Be it resolved that the estimated appropriations approved by the Board for the various departments in the county at the beginning and during the fiscal year are adjusted to reflect the expenditures incurred and to be incurred. Okay, some of these are up a little bit, some of these are down a little bit. It's just kind of the bumps in the road as we go, so this is to make things even out. And are there any discussions in debate at all? If not, the Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I motion that we adopt the Resolution number two zero one seven dash zero zero one five, reappropriation of funds for FY two thousand sixteen dash two thousand seventeen.
Okay, if there's no further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Solacek.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, moving on then, page four, item number six, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. This is the budget hearing. This is the one that will be going on, our taxes for this next go-around. At the public hearing, any resident may present objections to or arguments in favor of any part of the proposed budget. That means if you've got a question, that's where it comes. At this time, though, what we would like to do is present a PowerPoint presentation. Sometimes, if we can see it and hear it at the same time, it's a little easier to understand and a little easier to remember. So David, are you prepared at this point to do that?
I am.
It's your go.
Okay. Anybody, if you want to just follow the two monitors, either from up here or behind, things I'm gonna go through are gonna be on the monitor. We'll have James Neering as help to give us some graphics, which really kind of drive home some of the points. Starting out with Marshall County's mission, the number-one job of the Supervisors is our budget. And the mission of the county is to provide effective, efficient, transparent, the fiscal responsibility. Effective, we try for all our decisions from top to bottom throughout the entire organization to be purposeful, thoughtful, and strategic, and that's something that only comes from a team approach. Efficient, all of our employees, from the people that are in the seats, driving the maintainers, to the people in the auditor's office, to our sheriff's office, there isn't one single person that doesn't work hard at their job, and we here work hard to take less of your dollars to produce the goods that government has to provide to you. We have a very firm belief in transparency in government. Without question, we work hard to make all our decisions in public. There are discussions, not deliberations, that go on behind the scenes, information gathering, but not deliberations. We have a firm belief that sunlight is the best disinfectant and transparency is the way to go. And under fiscal responsibility, we all have a belief that the individual taxpayers, you know how to spend your money better than we do, so we're gonna take as little as possible to be able to run this. And once again, this whole budget, it is a phenomenal team approach from top to bottom in our entire organization. During this time, throughout the year, we're always met with several challenges, and we always have several objectives that we try to hit. Some of our challenges as of late have been from economic factors. We have been faced with a stagnant economy for a number of years at very, very flat Without question, we have been faced with decreased funding from the state of Iowa in several areas, and it's one of the things that we are very much concerned with in the future. Hopefully, we will see the state continue to fund the commercial backfill. If not, if they don't eliminate that credit, that credit will fall on the shoulders of the county and will be very detrimental to our budget. We've constantly got increasing costs of budget. A lot of that has to do with the society that we live in. We constantly have increasing roles of local government. There's, a lot of people think that government can be the answer to all the problems is, quite frankly, there's no possible way we can. The worst problem that I feel that we have to continually fight is the unfunded mandates from the state of Iowa, but we stay in connection with the legislature, not only through the Supervisors, but all our affiliates throughout the building, the auditor, the treasurer, the attorneys, and many of our general employees go down and make their, break their voices heard down in Des Moines, and it is effective. Our objective is to continually to pursue sources of non-taxable revenue on the property taxpayer to do our jobs. We've been very aggressive at that these last few years. Our engineering department has worked along with the Board of Supervisors and gotten a one million dollar grant to do the Center Street Bridge projects. We've continued to minimize costs wherever possible. Over the last few years, there has been many, many changes. You have seen motor vehicle come back to the courthouse, which has resulted in a much more efficient operation. Our treasurer has put in universal clerk, which has allowed each individual, when you come to do business with the county, to wait on you. It's none of this where you have to go over to this line rather than that line. It's very efficient. We have reduced and combined our buildings and ground staff and reallocated some of the things that are being done there. We have combined the recorders and auditors area, and both of those two departments are operating today with fewer personnel, but each of those personnel have had additional responsibilities handed to them, along with some additional pay to go along with that. But overall, we are operating below the budgets that we have had in the past with fewer people getting the same job done, and that has to be acknowledged. We have combined GIS and IT, which is operating today more efficiently, again, with fewer people. And it needs to be mentioned that all of these combinations have been done through opportunities and through attrition. Not one single individual has lost their job. It's been handled when we've had opportunities for retirements or people that have just plain left our organization. We have joined a region for mental health, which has allowed the mental health budget and the levy to be greatly reduced, and mental health funding and the operation of mental health has been going on. In this particular budget, some of our objectives, we have added two personnel to secondary roads. With the recent increase that we've had in secondary roads through the road use tax, the last couple of years, we have added personnel and equipment, and our secondary roads department and our engineer is able to do several projects, such as setting our own box culverts, doing the prep work for them, and the rest of the work where we used to hire that out. We're going much farther as far as delivering the services to the public in a more efficient manner. We're doing our own work rather than farming it out. It's worked well. This budget process, it seems like we just were giving this report a year ago. It actually, this is just the culmination of a year-long work. The real process starts in early December. There's a letter that goes out from the Board of Supervisors to each department head and elected official that explains what our goals are for the year. After that, we meet with each elected official and department head and go over their wish lists, their wants. We try to grant everything we can, but we also need to stay within our budget. Everything has gone literally line by line throughout, and there's been an excellent amount of communications between the Supervisors, the auditor, and every single elected official and their budgets. Also today, it's a very good example of our budget process, is mid-year, we typically do an amendment. That's also part of our budget process, and once again, those would be paid out of reserves. Everybody always wants to know where my taxes go. So this next slide is where your property taxes go from all of the different entities within Marshall County. You've got ten different school districts, thirteen incorporated cities, you have the community college, sixteen townships, the assessor, and the eggs extension, of course, Marshall County. Those are our main places. The next question is, how does my tax dollar get spent within those? If you look at the dispersment of that dollar that comes from the taxpayer, and this is current information we have from last year's budget, because everybody hasn't finalized this year's budget, but these numbers are extremely accurate. The school system takes forty-two cents of every dollar that you send to government. The city of Marshalltown, if you reside within Marshalltown, takes thirty-six cents. For those of you that don't reside in, within Marshalltown, your own community may take less than that. It's just a function of government within your community. The county, as an overall portion of your tax dollar, takes seventeen cents. Area education, six, area six, takes four cents, and the assessor, the state, and everybody else basically takes one percent. When we get to our individual levies within Marshall County, there are some decreases, and there are some areas that'll be staying the same. You will see general basic will decrease by a penny. General supplemental will decrease by twenty-three point six, six percent, sorry, not percent, cents. Debt service will decrease by one cent, one point eight cent. Mental health will decrease by point zero three cents. And again, the mental health levy is not set by the county, it is set by the region. When we look at rural services, there will be no increase nor decrease in the levy. At this particular time, I would also like to mention that this equates to a nineteen cent reduction in the total levy, and today, we're gonna talk about this a little bit further. I would also like to recommend that we make one further adjustment in our general supplemental portion of our budget by an additional sixty thousand dollar decrease, or point zero three five eight six cents, which would leave you an urban levy rate of six point seven one five one eight and a county rate of nine point eight two seven four two. That would be the final rate if my fellow supervisors approve that recommendation. The reason we are making that recommendation is our dollar amounts that have continued to increase in the, the health fund for Marshall County have increased approximately thirty thousand dollars a month. A lot of that has to do with the fact that five years ago, we put in a program that each employee on our healthcare plan receives an annual wellness physical. It has paid off. There has been several times when that wellness exam has caught issues, and it's much less expensive to prevent an issue than to cure it later on. With our, we've also had some retirements in these last couple of years, which has led itself to a little younger age group for our total employment pool, which has put a little less stress on our, on our healthcare. So we're able to reduce the levy in general supplemental because of our less reliance on the healthcare, and we're gonna ride down that balance a little bit. So it's not that we're necessarily changing, it's that we're gonna write our balance down. If our balance in general supplemental gets too high, we actually get written up in the audit. So we're backing off on that and gonna run that balance down. One other portion is, in the general basic portion of our budget, we are only allowed to levy three dollars and fifty cents. We have to vote to go above that. We will be voting today to go above that. The reasons we are going above it are specifically mandated by the code of the state of Iowa. The reason that we, our basic reason is property valuations have been just plain flat. Now I know that's gonna sound a little bit different when I mention our next portion we go through, 'cause it will entail total valuations, but when I get done explaining, you'll understand that the valuations are flat and why we will be voting today to go above the three fifty. Onto those very valuations. If you look at our valuations, they increased for fiscal year eighteen by approximately eighty-nine million dollars. Those valuations are not necessarily due to increased property values, but they are due to the fact that the city of Marshalltown these last couple of years has reduced substantial, released substantial dollars in TIF valuation that has allowed the county to be able to dip into that pool. Last year, they released approximately twenty-two million. This year, they released another ten million. Last year, the city of State Center released some TIS valuations, and we also had some increased valuations coming on because of the wind farms. The wind farms are taxed at a maximum of thirty percent of their valuation. They come on at a five percent increase for a six-year period of time. Both last year and this year, we are in, we are enjoying a five percent increase in both the Laurel Wind Farm Project and in the Vienna Project Phase One and Phase Two. Now let's go just one step further when I talk about that the valuations have not necessarily changed, but the pool that we are allowed to draw from has increased. If we talk about valuations and we look at ag land and structures and their valuations for this fiscal year, they actually dropped one-half of one percent. Residential dwellings on ag land dropped one point eight percent. Residential valuations dropped three tenths of one percent. Commercial valuations dropped two, point two three percent, and industrial valuations dropped one point six seven percent. We did have some increases that we've had to go along with. The Menards added a new factory, which added a substantial chunk that is available for taxation. But at the same time, one of the things that we are really being faced with and difficulties is through our assessor is the constant attack by an individual company. I'm not gonna name what it is, but they will go to our largest tax-producing entities, typically the industrial base, and they will go to that entity and say, "We can get your property taxes decreased." They will challenge the amount of assessment that is done by the assessor. I feel that these challenges are totally inappropriate, because when they look at these entities, they look at the site being a dark site, or a site that is not in operation, employing people, employing products, and the manufacture of products, and being an effective part of the economy. They will then say that that property, because it is a dark site, is obviously not worth as much as it is, and they ask for a decrease in valuation. Case in point, this year, we had one decrease in valuation, then in the last two years, went from approximately fourteen point eight six million dollars down to nine and a half million. That's taken a two-step. This year, it dropped from eleven million, seven hundred and fifty thousand to nine point five million. That one property was a nineteen percent decrease, and this is an ongoing entity. These are the things that we're gonna, we're gonna struggle with. There have been other states that have enacted legislation that have not allowed this form of looking at dark sites when you have an ongoing, ongoing entity. Hopefully, you'll see that in the next year in the legislature, something will come up. Wisconsin has done it, Michigan has done it, and hopefully, we will be next. Some other changes for commercial valuation in twenty, that just came on, we've had some of the increase in the dental operations on the south side of Marshalltown, the Dollar Store, and of course, Tysons has expanded. So that takes care of some of our valuations. Now let's get into revenues. When we look at our revenues, we've got several different line items for revenues. The net property taxes, or the portion of the revenues towards our budget that comes out of the property taxpayer, runs with a two point three percent increase. This net valuation is approximately fifty percent of our budget. Comes from property taxes, and it has been holding steady from fifty to about fifty point one percent for several years. The remaining portion of our budget revenues come from several other areas: penalties and interest costs, TIF, intergovernmental, licenses and permits, charges for services, use of money and property. The line that I absolutely hate, because I'm a numbers freak, is miscellaneous. Absolutely can't stand it on any ballot sheet, but it is what it is. And the proceeds from fixed assets. So when you look at that pie that's up there, that's what totally makes up our revenues and where they come from. You'll notice the largest portion comes from property taxes here at fifty percent on one side, the other largest portion on the other half of the pie, without question, comes from intergovernmental. Part of that intergovernmental is what we receive in road use tax and things that come down from the state. Local option sales tax, which we have been experiencing an increase these last couple of years with the Alliant project that has been going on. We've got an individual here from Alliant today that will be explaining what that has added to our local economy. And Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're at about forty-two, forty-five million?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven million dollars has been spent by individuals that have been working here on the Alliant project that have contributed to the increases in our local option sales tax. Sadly, that project is coming to an end, and we're gonna lose those employees here, but we've got a wonderful project that has been done, and it's been a tremendous boon for the economy in all of central Iowa. Unfortunately, it's done, and hopefully, we'll be on to the next one. Our intergovernmental, once again, that is holding flat. I do wanna definitely put out a warning on the backfill from the state of Iowa. During the deappropriation funding that went through the state legislature for one hundred million dollars this year, they did not touch this backfill for the budget that we are currently in. They're still in negotiations for the budget that we are proposing today. We will have to certify this budget before the state announces if they're going to completely fill that backfill. If anybody's crystal ball in the room has an absolutely perfect answer on that, please let us know, because my crystal ball's a little cracked and somewhat fuzzy on this issue. I have no idea where they're gonna go. Another portion of our budget that is concerning to me is the use of money and property. Because of our state... Because of our stagnant economy these last few years and the Fed rate being so low, the interest income that our treasurer is able to receive from financial institutions, even though he goes out and he's been very aggressive at getting more, is just plain flat. When you look at that portion of our budget from maybe going back 10 years, you've probably had over a $700,000 decrease, just in interest alone. When we have those types of increases, the property taxes have to make up the rest. Once again, those are just our revenues, some of the concerns that we've got looking forward. Onto expenditures. We've been pretty good this year. Public safety and legal services has an increase of 1.99%. And public safety is one of our largest portions of our budget. That is all of the sheriff, the jail, the attorney's office, and what we have for juvenile detention up in Eldora. Over the last few years, that has been one of the largest areas of growth in our budget. It's not because it's not being handled properly, it's a, it's a manifestation of the society that we live in. Unfortunately, we just have more people incarcerated. There is an increased burden on public safety. We have also been taking some steps here to increase courthouse security. That, those increases in courthouse security is foreign, four part-time individuals have been authorized to be hired, two of which have been filled through the, through the county sheriff. We will also have put money into Lucas's budget in buildings and grounds this year to pick up an x-ray machine and a magnetometer. Our intentions for public safety is to close the north door this year, get everybody used to coming through the south door and have one entrance, and in the future, to have everybody that comes in to go through some sort of screening. We, we need the security, not only for our own employees and the court system, but for all of the individuals that visit the courthouse and do their business here. Another portion of our budget that has seen a 2.9, 2.9% decrease this year is physical health and social services. Mental health has seen an increase of 7.31%. Once again, that is a levy rate that is not set by the county, it is set by the, by the region. County environment and education has seen an increase of 13.17%. Roads and transportation has seen a slight decrease, decrease of 3.27%. Government services to residents has seen an increase of 1.39%. Administration has seen an increase of 2.31%. Debt service has seen an increase of 3.64%. We will be having in this particular budget is the last budget that we have worked on as of recently that will have debt service in it. This is the budget that in April of 2018 should put the county, for all intents and purposes, out of debt. We will be debt-free. Capital projects has seen an increase in this year over last by 25.36%. Most of that is the proposal for the elevator that will be, being completed and the tuck pointing that will be completed. The elevator, we will be taking out of two different budgets, the end of this budget year and next year. Once again, just to highlight this, we've also added staff in the attorney's office, but those in the collections area. Those are offset by the revenues that, that come in for that area, so that is budget-neutral. We have added two full-time employees to the engineer's office. As we stated earlier, we are setting our own culverts, doing much of our own work. The engineer will be hauling their own rock this year, or a large portion of it. We're getting more done with our own people and making much more efficient use of the We're not contracting it out. As I stated earlier, the intent in this upcoming budget year, starting next January, is to let the project for the Center Street Bridge sometime in January, I don't know if it'll be early or late, it may be even into February, depending on when it gets done, and for the Center Street Bridge projects to be started in the 2018 construction season. Once again, keep in mind, that project will be done with federal funds, local option sales tax funds, and farm-to-market fund. That project will be done without putting a burden on the property tax owner. So when we talk about seeking funds from other areas other than property taxes, that's one of our shining examples. It does need to be definitely stated once again, under debt service. This is our budget that that will go, go away. We will be shifting from a process of, of borrow and pay to plan, save, and complete for our projects. Our intent is to give the taxpayer 100% bang for their dollar when we reach into their pocket and take, take money to do projects. This budget is essentially cutting up the credit card, and we're going to take it from there to one further step, which is savings ahead. Our, our intent is going to be, when we get done at the end of particular years, any unspent funds that are in general, basic portion of our budget, because our ending fund balances have gotten to the point where they are healthy enough, we can take those funds and slide them over into a capital savings project so we can actually do what each and every one of us do at home. We can save for the projects rather than going out and borrowing. James, let's go on to fund balances. Our fund balances are in pretty darn good shape, better than they've been in the past. They're not exactly where I would like to see them, but we're pretty conservative with them. Something that has to be kept in mind, that through these fund balances, a large portion of them, when you get right down to the bottom of it, our total fund balances in Marshall County at the end of 2017 in January were $24,431,882. Now that sounds like a lot, but that is the money that we hold for several other agencies and dollars that are held in trust and in restricted spending. So when you get right down to the restricted spending, of the 10 million we have left that are county dollars, 6.3 million of that is restricted, 40,000 is committed, 128,000 is assigned, and 3,484,000 is unassigned. We need these dollars in reserve to be able to get through the first half of the year when we don't have property taxes coming in. It's just our operating portion of our budget and we need. Once again, our, our fund balances are, are in pretty good shape. The balance that is in our health fund has allowed us to make the cuts that we're making today, and that health fund balance at the end of January was at $3.1 million. So our health fund is, is very well-funded. I don't have anything else unless there's questions that would come from anybody that hopefully, one of the three supervisors or the auditor could answer.
I might mention, real quickly, now, then we'll catch Harold. The reason for the health fund is that we are, 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 our insurance policy is run by us. So it's, it's, we are self-funded on our, on our health, health program, and we, we need, we need a certain amount of money in case, you know, two or three people have heart attacks and need, maybe need a, a heart transponder or something like that. So, but at some point, it's, we feel is, we've got more than what is necessary. And, and we do use, we do use professional managers on this to give us some ideas and, so that, that's why we're writing this, this fund down. Did I answer that correctly?
You did.
I'm not sure everyone knows that we're, that our health insurance is, is self-funded.
I'll, I'll add to that a little bit. With the, with the $3 million that's in it, it has increased a minimum of $30,000 monthly for this last year. The last month of January, we increased almost $107,000, which is the reason I'm suggesting we reduce general supplemental by additional $60,000. The health fund has basically been acquired through two different areas. Leveing for the fund through property taxes and also through employee contributions. This last year, when we did our, our union negotiations, we went with a 1.75% increase in wages for a three-year package, and we also went, because of this health fund, with a 50% reduction in the employee contribution of the health fund. Our employees have been extremely good at working with the county in this health fund. They've taken annual physicals, wellness programs that, that, there's, there's one individual in our entire organization that doesn't take that physical. When it comes to controlling costs with generic versus name-brand medications, our employees, when they've gone to the doctor, have chosen generics 99% of the time. It's just off the charts, the cooperation. Coupled with the fact that our, our employment group has, is slightly younger, there's been less dollars put on it, that we also voted for a three-year package to have the employee contribution cut by 50%, which is $120,000 annually. We've also done the same thing on the other portion, which is the general supplemental portion of our budget, to reduce that or the burden on the taxpayers by the same dollar amount. We're, and this has been a three-year commitment. So when, when things are, are bad, we've obviously had to levy more, but when they're good, we're levying less. So remember, Marshall County is self-funded. I know there's a lot that's going on in the news lately about, about employees and things as far as health insurance. We are self-funded. We are, we are committed to keeping our employees and keeping that, that, our health benefits at, at the level that they're at. You know, at the same time, there's no guarantee what the cost to provide those health benefits are going to be in the future, but regardless, our employees need to understand that they've got three years, starting in, in July 1st, of, of a 50% reduction of the employee contribution. Our, our balances are fine, and the, the train of thought with the board of supervisors is our employees are our most valuable assets. We've got a good group, and we're going to work to keep them here.
Harold.
Yeah, I have a question, and you referred to the Center Street Bridge. Are we talking about the one with the water plant?
Yes.
You know, where there's a property line there, I would consider that to be the city. Why, why is the county responsible to build it?
It does touch, I'm sorry.
It's counties. It is the counties.
Years and years and years ago, before any of the three of us were here, and we really have not ever been able to find a good answer, but the south side of that bridge, the border comes down about a foot, this side of it jogs back up, so that the entire bridge is within the county. The city was very cooperative with us when we went after this $1 million grant, stating that they are responsible for a portion of it. They worked very well with us and, and with Paul and the engineering department to get this DOT grant for the $1 million, and without the city's assistance, we would not have got it.
Harold, once upon a time in your life, there was a possibility that that was the city. But the, the boundary comes like this, oh, here's the bridge. Then back up again.
Sounds like your advantage.
I'm not going to use that term, but I think you're fairly accurate.
We're, we're, we're working with it, and, and no one, no one who's been a supervisor in recent years knows anything different. So that's, that's the way the, it is at this point.
So then are we getting some revenue off of the water treatment facility that's going out there then?
Taxes.
Taxes, as far as?
I don't know, I don't know that we can even tax that.
No, they're, they're exempt.
But they're very cooperative landowners to buy right-of-way off of. They're, they're going to be an easy deal.
Excellent organization.
As far as getting more land, more land to do our, to do our bridge?
Yeah, it's going to be easily acquired.
Fortunately, the, the grant came through and, for the, for the money to build the bridge, so. Now, grant money is still tax money, Harold. You're aware of that?
Yes.
It ju, it just doesn't affect our particular county budget.
That's two percent here about all the time.
Any other questions?
Nothing to add?
At this point? If not, I would entertain a motion that we close the public hearing. Or did I add, did I, there were no written comments?
No written comments.
Did we have that conversation?
Not yet.
Okay. And we have 17 individuals attending?
Um.
16, we had one lead. And we had one person ask questions. So if there are no more, I'd entertain a motion then that we close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we close this public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
Roll call vote, please.
9:45.
Solace.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Okay, the motion to close the public hearing has passed. Going on then to item number seven, which is Resolution 2017-16. And, yeah, David, we're gonna, somewhere we gotta work this in.
Before we adopt that resolution, I would like to, we, we need to make this adjustment that I'm suggesting of reducing the $60,000 in general supplemental, which would effectively be a .03586 cent reduction in the overall levy. We need to do that before we certify that.
Okay, I got a question.
During the process, whatever way you want it clean, just so it gets done.
Do we want a separate motion at this point to do that, or do we want to amend the resolution? Do we, do we amend resolutions?
I would probably recommend doing a separate motion.
Okay.
That way, we can have a roll call vote just on that particular reason, and then do the whole thing.
Let's, let's do that right now, then.
That being said, Mr. Chairman, I would motion that we reduce the general supplemental levy by $60,000, which will be a .03586 cent reduction in the levy, leaving an urban levy rate of 6.171518 and a county ride levy of 9.82742 per thousand dollars valuation.
Do I hear a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Did you get all the things, Dan?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Is there any discussion, questions, debate? If not, I'd entertain a motion to do this.
I just made a motion.
Did you move that?
And you seconded.
My fault. Roll call vote, please.
Solace.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion has passed.
Thank you. No, it's good and clean.
Okay. Now, with that there, then we'll move into item number seven. Resolution 2017-16. Adopt budget and certify taxes for fiscal year 2017-18. The proposed 2017-18 county budget was published in the Marshalltown Times Republican and State Center Mid-Iowa Enterprise on February 9, 2017. Were there any written comments in regard to this? Okay. Or projections on file, the county auditor, recorder's office? Are there any, any people here who would like to present an oral comment or question? I'm going to take that as zero. Now therefore be it resolved that the county budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018 be?
Adopted.
Adopted. I didn't have that written in. And the county auditor and recorder authorized to certify the, and file the budget and certificate of taxes as adopted, dated on Marshalltown, at Marshalltown, Iowa, this 21st day of February 2017. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Chairman, I- Mr. Chairman, I motion that we adopt Resolution number twenty seventeen dash zero zero one six, Adopt the Budget and Certify the Taxes for Fiscal Year two thousand seventeen through two thousand eighteen.
Okay, second?
I would second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Slasak?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion approved for adoption, approved for adoption. Okay, moving on then, this is our consent agenda and, um, I would take a mo, have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular session of February seventh, two thousand seventeen.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the minutes or approve regular session of February seventh, two thousand seventeen.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
No further, there's no debate, roll call vote, please.
Are we approving the times at the same time, or?
I would approve, yeah, I should, normally we do that all the same time.
Yep.
Slasak?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, motion has been approved. Okay, item number ten, approve personnel actions. And, um, Deanne, would you want to, uh, take a moment and explain the background?
Yep.
A little bit, please?
So, um, in my journey of being the auditor and recorder in the past, um, almost two years now, I guess, and being within the county, um, working as in the recorder's office and auditor's office since almost five years in April, so... Kind of seen some changes and kind of some of the things that we needed. One of the things is, is before I became the auditor and recorder, I was actually, um, made as the, kind of like a deputy recorder, but I was on the south side. And because we're combined, there's some limitations as to what we can do. So I've been kind of, in the past two years, I've been kind of doing that position, still overseeing that and, but not hiring for that position. So that has been unfilled and kind of thinking outside of the box as to what works best for our county compared to others. Because there's only two counties that are combined, Woodbury and Marshall, there's not a whole lot of, hey, what do you guys do in your area? How do you guys take care of this? How, what do you guys do? So because there's so many different things, like on our south side, recording of documents are on that side, but we also have passports. But my people on the north side, they can't do passports 'cause they do vital records. They, they do your birth certificates and complete those. So through the Department of State, we have some things where we have to be separated. So having a deputy recorder that does everything, they can't know everything because they're limited in what they know as well. So, um, looking at it that way and kind of looking at what the best needs of, what the auditor recorder needs as well, is that it should be more of individuals doing specific items throughout their, that what they're the most experienced in and what they are doing on a daily basis. So what I did is I kind of looked at what the salaries were and stuff. I was making, um, before coming into this, about twenty-one dollars an hour. So that has been just sitting there, not being utilized and, and, but I've been still doing that work. I've still been doing the checks and the things that, that those normal people have been doing. Kind of getting burnt out, so, um, kind of had a look at it, okay, we finally have the, the staff, kind of like my, um, my great basketball team. I have the fa, you know, the famous basketball team that, um, I finally got the roster that I want. So with that, I'm able to feel confident in giving some of these duties over to some of the staff that I have. So with that, not saying that they haven't been doing this for some of it, because I've been kind of slowly mentoring them into these positions, but this, these pay raises and stuff are what accommodates that, to say, yeah, now you are completely in charge of this. You are going to go to recorder school and you're gonna get certified in this. You're gonna, you know, those type of things, so... It will make our lives and save a lot of money on the taxpayers' side too, kind of looking outside of the box. So even with these changes, I'm still under my current budget. And even with my new budget coming in, I'm over fourteen thousand dollars less a year, even with increase in pay, as well as, I think, about thirty thousand dollars in what would be perceived as, if I was to hire a full-time person for benefits and such. So, um, so for what we need currently, this is what, we have a good team and I wanna reward them, plus give them the responsibilities, so they're taking over on some of those things.
So in short, you're down one person. You're not gonna fill that person.
No.
And you rearranged, uh, to each one of these people that we're looking at, more responsibility and more things to do.
Yeah, and, and keep in mind, because this was already in my budget, I didn't have to come toward, in front of the board to do this. But something that I hold dear to my heart is complete, you know, in front of you guys, transformation and stuff. I wanna make sure that everybody knows this is what I'm doing. I'm not gonna hide anything and I have the reasons to back it up. And if anybody has questions in regards to that, I'd be happy to talk about that, so... So complete transparency.
I, I totally agree. I think you've done well. Your office appears to be operating extremely well and it's definitely approved the transparency portion of it. So when you, you get into our mission statement of effective, efficient, transparent and fiscally responsible, you dinged all four belts.
Yep, yep. Now, keep in mind, now, in the future, there will need to be a budget director or somebody to that effect. And as to if that goes on to my budget or if that goes on to the board's budget, that's something that's definitely gonna have to be discussed next year. That will be something that's coming.
Okay. Let's, um, go into item number ten, approve personnel actions. A, and we'll do these separately. Uh, A, change rate of pay, Jessica Chezik, Auditor Recorder's Office Full Time Auditor and Recorder Assistant Vital Supervisor. Change rate of pay from fifteen dollars per hour to sixteen dollars per hour effective March one, two thousand seventeen.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the personnel action for Jessica Chezik.
Is there a second?
And I would second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Slasak?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. Motion approved. B, change rate of pay for Blaise Wer, Auditor Recorder's Office Full Time Auditor Recorder Assistant DNR Supervisor, Election Apprentice, change rate of pay from fifteen dollars an hour to sixteen dollars an hour effective March one, two thousand seventeen. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would approve the personnel action of increasing Blaise Wer.
I will second that.
Been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Slasak?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, C, change rate of pay, Roxanne Bach, Auditor Recorder's Office Full Time Auditor Recorder Assistant Document, Recording Supervisor, change rate of pay from sixteen dollars an hour to eighteen dollars an hour effective March one, two thousand seventeen. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the personnel action for Roxanne Bach.
Second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Slasak?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. D, change rate of pay for Maria Vargas Gonzalez, Auditor and Recorder's Office Full Time, Auditor Recorder Assistant Daily Accounting Supervisor, change rate of pay from two, from sixteen forty-eight per hour to eighteen fifty per hour effective March one, two thousand seventeen. I'd entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I approve the personnel action of the rate of pay for Maria Vargas Gonzalez.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Slasak?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion has carried. E, change rate of pay for Sue Kellogg, Auditor Recorder's Office Full Time Accounting Assistant, change rate of pay from twenty dollars seventy-seven cents per hour to twenty-two dollars fifty cents per hour effective March one, two thousand seventeen. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the personnel action for Sue Kellogg.
And I second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Slasak?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. We're down to F. Hire, uh, Richard Amet, and this is the Secondary Road Develop, Department. And, um, Paul, do you have just a moment to explain this one for us, please? This is a new position, correctly?
No, this is, this is a retirement. We recently had our, our engineering technician retire and this will be to replace that position, so... Just wanted to clarify, this is not one of my two new hires. The, the two additionals are actually down at the, at the shop.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there?
I don't, is there any, any questions?
I'll go over what this individual does, works in the...
It, the, the position involves project inspection on construction projects during the construction season, also helps with, with survey work when we're doing project survey and, and plan preparation. So it's, it mostly deals with, with new construction and, and then does assist us with, with other, you know, keeping of records and, and maps and utility permits and different, different duties is assigned by the engineer.
If I remember right, this is in our, in our union in our secondary road.
This is a union position, yes.
And does this individual have a CDL?
Yes, not required for the position, but this person does have, does have a Class B with, with air brake.
Somewhat be able to fill a double role from time to time.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions?
Had Rich been with you before, or is this?
No, he's, he's somebody I, I am acquainted with him outside of work and he's acquainted with a couple other people in the office. So I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with this, with this hire. He's, I think he's gonna be able to learn quick. He does, does not have his DOT certifications, but we can get him into the classes, so over the course of the summer, he will gain, gain those certifications. And, uh, by the union contract, the wage level steps with the certifications that he, that he earns for, for inspection of aggregate and inspection of Portland cement concrete.
Okay, that's where the certificates come from?
Yes, the deal.
Knowing, knowing that, that...
They come from the DOT.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the hire of Richard Amet, Secondary Road Department Full Time Engineering Tech One, at a preparationary rate of twenty-one sixty-six an hour, effective March thirteenth, twenty seventeen.
Chair?
And I second.
Been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Slasak?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion has carried. We're down to item number eleven and Mr. Ken Vincent. Is this, we're getting close to one of, getting close to the end of this thing, aren't we, Ken?
Very.
Not, not that we don't wanna see you anymore, but...
So patient, waiting for it.
One more time, okay.
Thanks for letting me come in. Excuse me, I've been fighting a cold here the last couple of weeks, but, uh... I just wanna give you a brief update on what has been going on out at the plant and where the project is totally. And I do not have any slides or any photographs this time. Possibly when I come back one final time, I'll have some, some updated slides to show you on that. The plant has achieved mechanical completion, which means that it's up and running. It's not actually feeding into the grid on a consistent basis. There's still work to be done. It hasn't been turned over to Alliant yet. It's still in the, in the ownership of the, the contractors. But it has received, achieved mechanical completion, which means that everything is, is up and, and operating. It is on schedule to be substantially completed on April first, so that's, that's a good thing. It's in the commissioning phase and for startup. There's still a few items still to be completed, but it is to be considered an operating facility. So, uh, security and safety are really big issues out there at this point in time. So you just can't walk in the plant and, and not have your safety gear on. Both combustion turbines have been run at full, full load and they have fed into the grid for brief periods of time. And the steam turbine, we've also run the steam turbine, so they have gone through the, the process of the equipment getting up, up to speed. And some power has been fed to the electric grid during the testing, but, uh, the testing is still continuing. There's still, uh, doing several things that need to be done to, to make it, to tune it and so forth. The plant operations, the maintenance personnel that will operate this thing in the future, they have moved into the plant and they are assisting the commissioning and the startup crews with, with the commissioning and startup of the plant. There are about two hundred and fifty personnel. I'm, I'm guessing it's probably less than that by now, but that includes the craft people that are doing a few of the, the last things that need to be done. The commissioning people, uh, the staffs of the various contractors, the administrative staffs and the Alliant personnel that are there as well. But that does change weekly and it, it is going down. One of the most important things is the safety record continues to be excellent. They've achieved over two point seven million labor hours without a lost time incident. And for a project of this size and scope, that's pretty much unheard. So it's a very, very good accomplishment and they will be celebrating that on Thursday at the plant. Some of the work that remains are completion of the piping and stack insulation. A lot of that stuff needs to be insulated yet. The lower portions of the stacks will be insulated. The top portions are painted, of course. There's some electrical work, some interior lighting. They've increased the level of lighting from what they originally thought they'd need. They're working on completion of the exterior street lighting. There's lights around the perimeter on the ring road and in the road coming into the plant. There's some painting. They need to be, uh, completion of the paging and security systems. There is valve and equipment labeling that's going on and then the scaffolding removal. I've got some statistics on, on the scaffolding here I'll share with you shortly. And as with any construction project, uh, the, the contractors are walking down project with Alliant personnel and going through punch list items and making sure everything that was in the contract that is to be completed is getting completed. The contractors have started to demobilize from the site. In fact, a lot of them are gone. It's a lot different looking out there than it was just, just a few months ago. And, uh, a lot of the trailers have been removed. The lay down areas are being cleaned out of material and equipment that was there previously. The landscaping and seeding, uh, they've moved stuff out of the way so they can complete the, the final grade and replacing the, the top soil, so there'll be some landscaping and seeding that will be completed. And then I'll, I'm gonna have to correct you a little bit on the forty-seven point three million dollars. That is just the amount that the contractor spent on buying equipment, material or services. That does not include the amount that any workers that were staying here, that paid for lodging or, or groceries or, or anything else. I don't have a number on that. I really don't. Uh, I, we just don't know what they spent. A lot of them did live here, some didn't, but still, you know, they bought groceries, they did retail, they, uh, went to, uh, gas stations, restaurants. There's just a lot of things that they spent their money on in this community. I don't have a number, but the forty-seven point three is just what the contractor spent on services and things that they bought locally. And then a few statistics, uh, the structural steel that was set out there, forty-five hundred tons. The, uh, concrete poured was twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty cubic yards. The total above ground below grade pipe that was, has been installed is, is a hundred and fifty thousand five hundred five feet. The cable install is two million one hundred sixty-eight thousand feet. And then the scaffolding, uh, twenty-seven hundred tons. Now, they had to be installed and removed. So that was a pretty big job that, that they, they did out there with scaffolding. And they are in the process of completing the removal of that. There's a, final couple of comments. We wanna thank the, the city and, and the county for the excellent help that they've given us on this project. Paul especially with the engineering department, when we did the pipeline work, they were there to help us on a lot of issues and we really appreciate that. But one last thing is, uh, thanking the citizens of not only the community, but the, the county, especially the ones that live east of the plant. We know it was a pretty big inconvenience to have that, that traffic signal there. That will be coming out, uh, sometime in the future when the plant personnel no longer feel they need it. I will be working with the city on that. But during the steam blows, we know it was extremely noisy, but the people I talked with and, and the plant manager talked with were extremely good to visit with. They understood, they were, they're patient and we really appreciate their cooperation that, that they showed us on that. So, uh, entertain any questions if you might, if you might have. So, uh, entertain any questions if you might, if you might have.
You got one back here.
Yeah, Ken, uh, I'm glad you touched on the one, the light. That's been a hammerweight for me and hundreds of people that travel that road daily. So I'm glad to hear that thing's coming down. My one concern is, is what is gonna be the noise level, decimal level of that plant that's fully up and operated? Because I live about little over two miles. And I know when they were blowing off, cleaning the pipes or whatever it was, it sounded like a jet was taking off of my driveway and so forth. I can still hear it now, uh, some. But what is gonna be the noise and decimal level of that plant when it's operating?
It'll be much less than what you're hearing now.
I would hope.
Uh, well, it will be. I, I'm telling you that. So, you know, please, please bear with me here. Uh, what you're hearing right now is that is not going through the condenser. It's still going to atmosphere. And, but it's not a steam blow like we had back in December, which is extremely noisy. So that will be going away once the plant has been, they've completely cleaned it out, they've got it operational. It'll be going through, the water will be going through the cooling, the condenser, condensing it back down to water, going to the cooling tower, and it'll be recycled back and forth. So you're hearing some noise that you're not gonna probably hear in the future.
Would it be comparable to the Sutherland plant that's there now?
Probably less.
Probably less.
Probably less. We've taken baseload, uh, or not baseload, but, um, the start of the project, we took, uh, contractors did sound level recordings all the way around the perimeter of the facility. And we know what those are and we've been assured that it will not exceed those. So that's as much as I can tell you.
Another question is, what is the net gain or loss of jobs out there? Because I know the one individual that works in the Sutherland plant tells me that he's going to lose his job or the prospects are real good.
Right.
What, what's the net gain and what's the loss of jobs?
I can't tell you what the net loss will be, but there will be a loss of jobs compared to a coal-operated plant. Uh, there won't be coal handling. There won't be those kind of issues that, uh, create jobs for people. Uh, this plant's highly automated. There'll be about twenty personnel that operate that facility.
And what is it currently at?
There's probably about the same number there now because a lot of those people have, have, uh, transitioned out, been, been to another place. Some of them came to the new plant. Uh, some of them retired. Some of them, uh, will, will end up without a job. There's no coal handling facility out there. Uh, they haven't handled coal for four years, three, four years. So they've reduced the plant numbers at Sutherland quite a bit over the last three or four years.
And is there any plans of doing something with the old facility?
That's up to Alliant and I'm sure there'll be a decommissioning of that plant. Uh, what they do with it is, uh, something they'll have to make a decision on.
And what's been, uh, all the upgrades or that's going on right beside the plant there with those peaking units?
Okay, there are three existing, uh, oil-fired combustion turbines. They have about a fifty-megawatt rating for a hundred-and-fifty total. Those were decided to be, uh, reworked and converted to natural gas and that's what they're doing at this point in time. So, uh, those will no longer be oil-fired. They'll be all natural gas-fired. They'll remain as peakers.
Okay. Good questions, Harold. Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you.
You getting your fishing rods part packed up, are you? Is that, is that what?
No, the car's getting packed for Florida.
Oh, okay, okay. Very good. Thanks.
Now, now that you sold the boat, you can come up to the cabin and we can fish there.
Okay, down to item number twelve, one that we've been, uh, looking forward to here for some time, uh, in the supervisor's office. And that's the proposed, uh, passenger elevator upgrade and modernization for Marshall County Courthouse. And, um, I will need to set a date and a time for the public hearing. But just prior to that, um, gentlemen, would you have some things that you would like to tell us about, please?
We have some, uh, display material that my associate, Justin Sorensen, will be helping me with. And I'd like to introduce, uh, our mechanical electrical engineer, Joe Kapo. He'll share some information also. We're here today to talk, and I'm Dave Schultz from the local architectural firm, uh, TSP. Um, so what we're, our purpose here today is, as you've stated, was to give you an update. This is not a public hearing. We had hoped to be in that position, uh, for today's meeting, but we were working through some, uh, additional issues with the electrical side of things. Joe will visit, uh, that in more detail here in a little bit. You have some information in front of you. In particular, if you could look at the, follow me along with the, uh, with this. And I'd like to start with, um, Justin, if you could get us to the project description, scope of work file. It should be the file called, uh, Project Description Scope of Work. Briefly, you know, my goal here today is to share with you the project's scope, the schedule, uh, the estimate and the form of contract and how we would move to the next step. So generally, the project consists of the upgrade and modernization of two passenger elevators, including the hoistway, hoistway openings, the cab, elevator equipment, and controllers. The associated upgrades to me, uh, will help the life safety, mechanical, electrical systems. Improvements are to bring the nineteen-seventy-five vintage elevators into compliance with current codes, the ASTM or ASME, A seventeen-point-one and A seventeen-point-three. Uh, and the Americans with Disabilities Act is required by two thousand, two thousand twenty. There's a new statute that requires all grandfathered elevators to come up to code by two thousand twenty. So you're definitely on that power curve to make this happen, given that your elevators were installed in nineteen-seventy-five. Uh, both elevators are two-thousand-pound elevators at, at a hundred-and-twenty-five feet per minute, um, operation. They're hydraulic jacks. Uh, one goes five stops, the other goes six, with one elevator visiting the attic, uh, which is important for service and, and all of the, uh, work that is, that goes on up there. Um, travel distance, you can see forty-five feet, four inches. In one case, fifty-eight feet, five inches in the other. They're dual jack elevators that are in-ground, uh, or hoist, hydraulic jacks that are in-ground. And some of this work will include, uh, not only the elevator equipment, meaning the pump, the controllers, the piping, the hoistway equipment, doors, cabs, new cabs, uh, elevator call stations, because that's part of the ADA, um, accessibility, uh, features of it. The call stations that would tell you whether we're traveling up or down. There's some pit improvements that we need to make, uh, including, uh, providing service ladders to those pits. Associated elevate, electrical work will include an emergency power system upgrade and power management so that we can actually use those in the event of a, um, uh, power loss to use the elevators not only for the lowering, which is the usual condition, but also to raise and operate them for ex, uh, evacuating buildings should the fire marshal choose to do that. Uh, they're going to be equipped with a staggered start VFD or VF, variable frequency drive power system so that we don't increase the power demand on your current electrical system and we can manage those elevators for your, uh, current generator. Um, Joe will, uh, address this a little more detail in a moment. But we'll also upgrade to meet the current, uh, fire alarm and detection system code on the electrical side. Uh, associated mechanical work, we have some ventilation, um, improvements to do in the elevator equipment room. The codes require us to, to mod, modulate the temperature because some of those controller boards are temperature sensitive. And we need to make sure that we're, we're, uh, monitoring that. Life safety work will also include, include some sprinkler redo, uh, sprinkler heads both in the attic, uh, area, in the elevator shaft and in the elevator pit area. Uh, there will be one alternate. Joe can address this here momentarily, a little bit more. Um, that right now, the base bid assumes that some of the power that is related to, uh, switchgear that's now in your IT server room, MDF room, be moved to its proper location in the, uh, electrical equipment room. There's some, uh, sensitive equipment in that area, access to that room. They're just incompatible uses. And so we've been working with your IT department to identify the scope and so forth that's needed to address that. There's a possibility, however, that when we pull the conductors through the, the conduits that were laid under the floor, that that may not go so well. So the alternate would take a bid to say, go overhead and through the ceiling if those are unavailable to us, if they should not work. So that's the proposal for the scope of work.
But current, currently, we do have those conductors going from the generator to that room. They're just not hooked up.
That's correct.
So essentially, in, in, in the best-case scenario, we'd be moving, for lack of a better term, a service panel from point A to point B and hooking it up to the generator.
Right. And then there's gonna be some back.
Okay.
Which, which again involves some new conduit. But.
Even if it goes through the existing conduit, we're gonna have to add some more?
No, the, the existing conduit under the slab is if, they pull the wire out of it's wad or something like that.
Oh, okay. I get what you mean.
Or if they can't get the pole done, you know, who knows, you know, what's down there. And, and sometimes you can't even get the cables out. So we're gonna bid overhead routing as an alternate. And when they go to do the work, if the backfires, they'll just go ahead and do it. And we would incorporate it as a chain.
Okay. Well, with any luck.
It's a contingency type thing.
All right. I understand.
In, in this kind of information, we're gonna have to prepare you for kind of worst case, you know, and, and, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll do better than these things. If we can move on real quickly, I don't wanna take a lot of your time, but we'll certainly address anything in more detail. Uh, the schedule would be the next thing if we get that up and see that, Justin. Uh, the next page is the schedule. You can see that, uh, we are here on, uh, the twenty-first. Project update to the board supervisors. This is not a formal meeting. But if you approve our schedule, in particular, you, we mentioned, uh, set a, a date for the public hearing. Uh, we are suggesting that be a, uh, week, week down the road, which would be the twenty-eighth. Item ten would be a special meeting, but, uh, a short one, given that we've already gone through this update. Unless you should ask us to change something and, and adjust a little bit before we count to you with the public meeting. And then that would mean, if you're amenable to that, that, uh, we would work with Ms. Gassman to get a, uh, a public notice out here immediately after this to meet publication notices. Thereafter, you can see our schedule from eleven, twelve, thirteen to, uh, item fourteen would be to publish a notice of letting to the contractors, requirement by law, not more than forty-five or less than four days prior to our bid. We see bids on the thirtieth of March and consider award bids at your regular meeting in April, uh, to award those bids. Thereafter, you can see items eighteen through twenty-six is contracting, subcontracting, off-site fabrication, mobilization, demolition, getting the equipment onsite and installed, and various, uh, things that would happen together to arrive at item number twenty-seven, which would be substantial completion on July thirty-first is our goal.
Okay, I just want to, to acknowledge this, that our intent is to attempt to pay for this out of two consecutive budgets.
Okay.
The end of this fiscal budget year, which ends, uh, the thirty-first, thirtieth of June and the remainder out of the budget year that starts July first. So it's extremely important that you hit a substantial completion or at least material here and on premises and the billing done so that we can get that out of, part of this budget year.
Right. And you'll be getting, to the contractor, you'll obviously have a contract in place and you'll be getting monthly pay requests.
Okay.
Through the course of that, uh, whole period from the day you award the contract in this fiscal year, crossing over into the next fiscal year.
Okay. Mary, a quick question. In case we run into a snag there, would we be allowed to do a transfer of those funds from general basic to capital so that they would carry over into the next fiscal year?
You have budgeted to pay for this project out of general basic.
Right.
Capital.
Okay, but. So we wouldn't.
Do any transfer.
Don't have to do a transfer. Okay. I got it.
And I'd point out in our, uh, work with other public entities and our previous work with you, that the state law does require that you, uh, uh, accept the, uh, project as complete and then the last payment is thirty days thereafter, which is the claims period for subcontractors and so forth. So if substantial completion in, is in that area of, uh, July thirty-first and we're anticipating that you would have that acceptance on the August eighth, thirty-day claims period. So the final payment wouldn't be made till around, uh, September seventh, if all goes as according to our schedule. So that's the general schedule. In particular, today would be to hope that you can, um, uh, schedule the public hearing on this twenty-eighth.
Okay.
The next page, if you could go to the budget summary, guys, on the screen. This is, uh, again, a, an overall budget that includes construction costs as well. The first two pages is a summary sheet. The next eight is the detailed sheets, some kind of our template that prompts us to think about anything and everything that could be involved in a project, including site work and so forth. So, uh, our typical budgets include, um, these five items. The first is pre-designed cost by the owner. Obviously, there hasn't been any, uh, emotional costs or land acquisition or anything like that, so our budget is showing zero. I do have to correct that, though. I forgot that we spent, Lucas, was it three-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars for the state elevator pre-inspector?
Yeah, it was right around there.
Yeah, I will correct that for your public hearing. Uh, I believe it was three-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars. We had a pre-designed inspection by the state elevator inspector to help define the deficiencies so that when we do have it inspected for use and certification, he doesn't bring any surprises. This is a service that the state does and, and we visited with Lucas to have that done. You can see that obviously under the item B, which is the construction costs themselves, the base bid amount, there is no site work, demolition, paving, or any of that. That item is zero. Under general construction, you can see that there's some twenty-seven-thousand dollars worth of demolition. Pulling out, um, various pieces of equipment and, and things that we have to change. Uh, no foundation work, no superstructure work, no envelope work, but interior construction, we have the elevators themselves, the equipment that we mentioned. We are reworking some walls and doors at the attic because we have to confine that space. Right now, your two shafts go right up to the attic and it's basically a chimney for fire and smoke. And that's a combustible attic space. So that landing at the top of the elevators will be enclosed and the, the drywall will be upgraded to be a complete fire enclosure at the top of the, the attic. There also is some need to upgrade the fire rating for the elevator equipment door itself at the main floor. So I think there's four doors involved for upgrades, uh, for fire rating and so forth. I might also add that we, um, invited both the local fire marshal and the, um, um, building inspector to come and tour the project after the state elevators inspector was here so that we're all on the same page on what needs to be done. Um, the mechanical items, there's thirty-three-thousand dollars in that. That includes the sprinkler systems that I talked about, the ventilation for the elevator equipment room, the, uh, smoke extraction system for the, uh, elevator shafts. Right now, your elevator shafts, uh, do have a vent that goes into the attic, which is a no-no and it needs to be ducted all the way to the outside. So we're gonna work with your existing, uh, ventilation system up there to modify it slightly so we can duct to it and then exit the building in openings that are already there. So we won't be impacting the exterior historical nature of the building at all. So that totaled in, uh, and I would say that also, if you look back on the detail, uh, you'll see eighty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-five dollars for the electrical contract that has all this material that, uh, Joe will share with you, including, there's about twenty-five-thousand dollars in there that is a allowance for, um, execution. As we cut some of these, uh, circuits and take them down and move them around and put switches on both ends, we have to have some process to keep you and your IT systems up and online with power. And there'll be some temporary facilities and costs associated with doing that. This hasn't been done quite this way and, you know, we can't, don't have a lot of historical records to say that's exactly the same project. So that's what we experience for cost. So these are kind of an allowance guesstimate as to what this, this, uh, process will actually cost. So that's, uh, the base bid. Then the alternate would be the only one alternate that we talked about. No costs in any, any, um, division other than electrical. We see that upgrade to go overhead with the circuit that Joe described, uh, to be about three-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars as opposed to going underground. This may not have to be done, but we wanna be prepared if it, if it's necessary. So. Uh, that's the, uh, summary of the, uh, overall budget. There is a lot of detail there that you can go through at your leisure. If there's any particular item that you wanna look at again. Yeah, it's almost as important to see where we put zeros sometimes as where we put actual numbers as we prompt ourselves, as we go through a template like this to, to consider whether they're, for example, BCT tile flooring, the elevators have to have a floor. Yeah. So we'll have a finished floor in both elevators uh, and in that, uh, space upstairs in the attic, uh, the pit ladders and so forth. You'll see that detail throughout these six pages of material. If I could, I wanna give Joe an opportunity to talk a little bit about the electric side because that's where the complexity of the, uh, uh, engineering of the, um, emergency system is. Joe?
Thank you. Where I started this uh, job, Lucas kinda hinted at that there was um, some problems. And so I just wanna, I'd like kind of like a little mental list I wanted to run by you. The new elevators, the motors will be thirty horsepower, what's theirs is fifty horsepower. So, uh, the full load amps on the fifty horsepower motor is a hundred and fifty, so that's, both those elevators can run at the same time, so that's three hundred amps draw coming out of a eight hundred amp panel. So, we cut that down, the full load amps on a thirty horsepower motor is ninety-two, so we're getting a credit on the the building load of about a hundred and sixteen amps. And so one of the things I did, I did a little voltage drop calculation based on um, full load, assuming everything's going at the same time. And it was getting, the voltage drop on paper was getting pretty high, but then from talking with Lucas and I also spoke with Schumacher, have there ever been any problems caused by excessive voltage drop? Historically here and both of them said, no, so. Point I'm trying to make is that we're, when we go with this thirty horsepower new elevators, we're we're heading uh, in the right way. Um, in the IT room, just outside is your generator. Right inside the wall in the IT room is the transfer switch, the transfer switch needs an emergency power feed and a normal power feed. And then the load panel, which is the emergency panel, sitting right next to it. So, both of those are the things that we're gonna get out of the IT equipment room, that's that's not a good place for. But, that these, and then, when the courthouse was renovated um, in oh-five, when they did the children and all that. It was done in phases, so it was very hard to figure out how this thing came together. The generator is known on the electrical drawings as existing, so phase one must have been just to get the generator there. And then this second phase was they moved the transformer from the southwest corner over here to the southeast corner. And um, they showed the the feed coming from the transfer switch back to the normal power panel. But it was, it it it, in the first phase, directly below on this east panel riser, there was a hundred amp feed that went to the transfer switch, that was just the temporary. In that first phase when the generator was put in. For some reason, when they pulled the cable, it was never connected over at the source, the normal power source, and it was never connected in the transfer switch. And the the electrical design showed getting rid of that little hundred amp feeder, so all you've got is a hundred amps right now, that's that's the in place. So, your four hundred amp generator is not 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 gonna be utilized. So, once, and and Lucas and I opened that panel up, like, what is going on, and then who was the guy down there, um?
Evan.
Evan, yeah.
Okay, he was around then, he kinda helped fill in some of the blanks about how could this have happened? And we still don't know, but um, anyway, what the the, this project I think needs to be done um, in phases. And the first phase is gonna be to get the power distribution squared away, both normal power and electrical power. And while that's being done, we will get the elevator shop drawings reviewed and approved, and this is gonna take days, this is twelve weeks. To get, for the elevator, once it's approved, for the equipment to get here. So, we can do all this other stuff beforehand and then then the the second phase is gonna be um, uh, actually putting in the elevators. So, what is involved, and there's this little drawing here that I I highlighted it, each each of you guys has a copy in yellow, everybody has a copy there if you just look. So, I did a yellow pencil, that is the electrical distribution work that we're we're trying to get done. So, this little partial plan here, this is the south electrical room. And this one here is the IT room. And then these other two are the elevator equipment room, so what has to happen is. Right there is what's the east panel risers, that goes all the way to the attic. And so, half of your courthouse on the east side will be on the generator. So, if you go around, it's the panels that are just right outside here, there's one, there's one on every floor. So, what we gotta do is we gotta backfeed that, we what we gotta do is relocate the transfer switch, relocate the emergency panel over here to the south electrical room. And then we gotta backfeed, so what is involved is your electrical contractor will have to get these conduits roughed in. And maybe pull some cable before they disconnect the transfer switch and disconnect the emergency panel and move them over because you're down when that happens. So, that's gonna be on a long weekend, like a holiday weekend or a long weekend. And it's it's gonna be tricky, I think, for talking with Jim, is that your name?
Jim, yeah.
Jim, okay, we probably gotta get a small generator to take care of him because that system needs to be online. Now, it's only there if the county loses power. So, it's 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 something else that's gonna be in that little twenty-five thousand dollar allowance that we've got figured in there. And so that would be, we would have the contractor provide that and get it get it temporarily wired in place, so you're no, you're nowhere south than you are right now. Then, just as you work through this, they're gonna, like say, everybody cuts out at noon or whatever, so. They'll disconnect all the feeders, they'll demount the transfer switch, relocate it, demount the emergency panel, relocate it. You gotta do a bunch of rewiring over there, put it all together, they gotta start pulling cable from there over to uh, the the IT room up above the ceiling. Because they have to pick up this panel riser and there are two panels that are in the IT room that are all on emergency power that we have to backfeed. So, those little yellow lines, if you track them, those are the conduit routing, but there's like four or five things, so it's gonna be a very busy weekend. And so that's gonna be sunup sundown probably, type of uh, of installation. Then once that's all done and put back together, somewhere in there is when your elevator equipment will arrive and and then they'll start. You know, and I don't know how that's gonna be going, if you're gonna shut down both elevators at once and or make them keep running up and running. That's all we gotta be kinda figuring out.
I think we're one of those, one and then the other, and we've gotta, we don't wanna interrupt your schedules and court schedules and so forth. And that's part of the reason, obviously, that your elevators are so important, not only on a a normal operation, but under emergency operations as well.
Well, and we and we waited to do this until after the elections were done too, it would have been a nightmare to be doing this around election time.
And then another thing that um, the conduits we gotta get, we gotta get from the transfer switch, you gotta get a conduit, a signal conduit, a couple wires clear back to the generator. So, that will let the transfer switch is what starts the generator, there's a relay in there, a loss of power, it's gonna send a start signal to the generator. And then on loss of power, we're also gonna run another circuit over to the elevator controllers. They have programming in their controllers so that you can run both elevators, but it will not allow them both to run at one time. So, you will not be overloading your generator, because the biggest motor or loads in the building that will be on the generator are the are the elevator motors. So.
And and that's just, just to be clear, that's just under emergency.
Right.
Very normal power.
So, so the point is you'll have both elevators, but you may have to manually switch, you know.
But at the same time, the operation of this system should be substantially reduced because currently, if a button gets pressed on fourth floor, both elevators go there. The way I'm understanding this now is they will be independent of one another.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, the logic in that.
So, it should operate.
Would do that, yes.
A lot more efficiently electrically wise.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, we could have gone um, their label is VRF or whatever, but it's a variable speed on the elevator controller. That cuts your horsepower down to thirty, so I says, I talked with Louis, let's not even consider the alternate, we need to cut horsepower. So, you're you're getting a a way better system than than what you've got right now, for sure. And then, I worked with CEC, which is your fire alarm folks, uh, there's elevator recall, which is required for every elevator installed in the state of Iowa. That was a code change, you know, five years ago or so, something like that, your elevator right now does not have elevator recall. And what that means is when the fire alarm system goes off, both elevators go to a designated floor. And then then the fireman can come in and assume control of the, that's the recall, and so the, so you don't have that right now, your fire alarm system, like, I just talked with the guy this morning. Your fire alarm system has the hardware and the software in it, it was never utilized because these elevators that you have right now were incapable of that feature. So, that will have to be incorporated, there's a little bit of programming to uh, get the elevator recall to work. Elevator recall is, there's a a smoke detector in every elevator lobby, elevator equipment room and at the tops of the shafts are what, all of those are, can initiate elevator recall. So, if any one of those goes off, that's what's gonna happen, or if the fire alarm system goes off, that's what's gonna happen. And then fire marshals, um, at the top of the shafts, um, we're gonna have, uh, we're, they've hinted at at this before, you're. The shafts are required by code to have relief to the outside, right now they're relieved to the attic space. So, uh, James Badke, he was the elevator inspector, he was here, which is no relation to Lucas. He was here and he he, we walked all the way through, we had the building inspector and a separate visit and the fire marshal had a separate visit. And so everybody's in agreement and um, we're gonna duct the elevator shafts over, there's there's a a relief fan. On the north side of the building, in the attic, and a relief fan on the south side, we're just gonna rework the plenums and tap into those out outside of the damper so it's going out of the building. So, there will be a smoke damper there and the fire marshals, they wanna be able to, how how a smoke damper works is if there's shaft or a smoke in a shaft, it's gonna close the damper. And uh, you're not gonna feed the fire anymore, and then when the, when the fire department gets here, they can manually open or close it to relieve the smoke out of the building. That's typically how it works.
It will become a firefighting feature that he has control of, as well as he can take control of his elevators, he leaves them safe to exit the building for those that can't come down the stairs. So, that will be a huge enhancement, another thing is he mentioned that relative to the fire alarm and the recall that's in your fire panel but not in the controllers of the elevator, and to the seventy-five damage. Is access control, we mentioned it earlier, the security upgrades that you're doing throughout the courthouse. You will now be able to program the elevator for various floors and various times, you're programming them out and programming them in if required, special access. It'll all be in conjunction with your access control system.
Our timeline's pretty tight.
Right, and and we can present it that way too when we go up and did that.
Okay.
These are the milestones and.
Yeah, there there can't be. Uh, I would recommend when we send that out, that uh, there'd be substantial penalties if the timeline is not met, so that we can stay within our budget times. Weather should not be a factor, it's all done inside, but yeah, um, definitely I would put that in when it goes out to bid, that there's uh, it's gotta be done within the timeline.
And then, I think that's the next big deal I need to talk about is, I think we're ready to go.
Yeah, it's a matter of, do you guys do agree that especially in a week, I believe it's a week from today?
Yes.
That it actually has a formal hearing, uh, which will be a lot of the same information, we'll add uh, in terms of formal contract, the penalty clauses, discussion. Uh, that will allow us to work with Lisa, you get the notice of here now.
Okay.
An example of, there there are wraps, but I think we put the no, the sample notice of hearing as well as the notice of letting in your package, so you can see how we work that.
Can Jared or Lucas or Deanne, can you think of anything that is gonna interfere with the timeline of doing this from your departments?
No, we're we're having an election in April, of course, but we'll be fine because it'll be after, it sounded like we're not even bidding on it until after.
We'll always have one elevator.
And we're always, and as soon as they said, we're only gonna have, we'll always have one elevator, that was my main thing, so.
Yeah.
As long as we're making sure of that.
I don't think we ever had an intention to shut them both down at once.
No, you had to shut the building down.
Nothing from you? Okay, uh, timeline, you got any concerns, Mary?
Okay, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure glad we put extra money in the budget.
Okay, taking a look here at item twelve then, proposed passioner elevator upgrade, modernization for Marshall County courthouse, setting date and time for public hearing. Uh, I would entertain a motion at this point then to uh, uh, set that time for a public hearing.
Mister Chairman, I motion that we set Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen, at nine AM, meeting room number two, northeast corner of the courthouse. For a public hearing on the proposed elevator upgrade, modernization for the Marshall County courthouse.
Here's second.
I second.
Moved in the second then, to uh, uh, set this date. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote please.
Slossick?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Okay, moving on then to resolution uh, uh, item thirteen, resolution two thousand seventeen. Pardon?
Okay, sorry.
Uh, sharing a mental health advocate, um, this agreement is entered into by uh, and between Harden County, Iowa, by its board of supervisors. Franklin County, Iowa, by its board of supervisors, Story County, Iowa, by its board of supervisors, and Marshall County Board um, of supervisors. And shall be effective, and it would be effective this day. This agreement is made and entered into accordance with provisions of chapter twenty-eight E of the Code of Iowa, the purpose of this agreement is to share the services of mental health advocate. Here and after referred to as the advocate, and as we go down through here, uh, I'm not sure that we need to read all of this. But um, um, this is to share, uh, uh, and now the person that we're we're going to share has been working uh, as a mental health advocate. For these counties already, including Marshall County, uh, for the last couple of months. And um, we wanted to have a a little bit of time where where we're gonna see this is going to work before we did this, thus best this has happened. And uh, so at this, at this point, um, I would entertain a motion then, um, to adopt this resolution.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to adopt resolution number two, zero one seven dash zero zero one seven, twenty-eight E, agreement sharing of mental health advocate costs.
Mister Chairman, I would second that.
If there's no further discussion, roll call vote please.
Slossick?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, resolution to adopt is passed. Okay, now, we have, we had hired a mental health advocate and this is a person who will continue in this position. But then on item fourteen, then we have to uh, um, remove her as the interim, temporary, part-time Marshall County mental health advocate. So, um, the following adoption of resolution two thousand seventeen, two thousand seventeen, uh, twenty-eight E agreement of the sharing of the mental health advocate. Cost this action supersedes the action taken by, uh, the, taken on December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen. So, I would move, or I would entertain a motion then to uh, approve this action.
Mister Chairman, I motion that we approve the change of the mental health advocate from interim, temporary, part-time to the adoption of the resolution.
And I would second.
And moved in second to approve this action, is there any discussion with our, among our board?
This is a long time, you've worked on this project a long time.
Yes, yes, um, and it's working, it's working well, so. Um, if there's no discussion, roll call vote please.
Slossick?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item has been approved. Uh, item fifteen, request for the use of the courthouse grounds, uh, Dial and Doze Restore Church Pastor. Uh, has requested the use of the courthouse grounds for an international food and music festival held on Sunday, September tenth, two thousand seventeen, from eleven AM to four PM.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I'm representing a committee brought together, it's co-chaired by Valrau for the Convention and Visitor Bureau, along with Nikki Hartwig at uh, CAPS. And it's just a group of uh, community people that want to uh, represent and. And it's just a group of community people that want to represent and celebrate our diverse cultures, from our Western European background to our Southeast Asian, Latino, and other nationalities as well. And we've seen great input from MCC, Iowa State Extension, Art and Culture Alliance, along with the city, Parks and Rec, and many other groups. And we're looking to just have an event where we can celebrate all the different groups of people that we have here while also getting to learn a little bit more about each other. So we request, request the use of the grounds on September 10th from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m. impending. Your approval of here, we can then continue on with marketing and fundraising where we may come back and request the band shell at a later time.
Can you kind of tell us a little bit how you're going to use the grounds?
Yes. So one of the things that we've done in similar, what we've seen is we will, we would like to bring in some food vendors that would represent some different cultures as well, along with having areas of setup where people can, with temporary tents, as you would see at like Link Creek Art Festival or different festivals, kind of surrounding that would have, have things, wares to display, to show the different cultures and where we kind of come from. So it'd kind of be similar events that we've seen around here, be it Oktoberfest or what you see, kind of those various tents around. That's kind of what we're foreseeing, along with the use of the Porta-Johns', as we've seen at other events as well.
We're a little, we're a little, we get concerned...
Okay.
...when people start driving steaks in the ground. We have a lot of cable and so on and so forth underneath this part of ground out here.
Right.
And would request that if we do this, that our building and grounds guy over here, Lucas Babkey, that you get to know him very well. And he can direct this thing.
Perfect.
And, because there's just places that it won't work.
Right.
And we're not trying to, you know, micromanage.
No, we understand that. I definitely understand that, and I will tell you, our desire is not to do anything that would harm the courtyard, the courthouse along.
You need to be respectful. These guys take great pride in the grounds.
Right, very much so.
Driving across and doing other things can harm that, as long as you work with Lucas and the rest of the guys in buildings and grounds, it's not a problem.
Okay, we greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
And of course, you're going to have ludofisk lefts on meatballs, right?
Not by me. But we will have those that can do that, and God bless them for it.
Just checking.
Okay, he entered you very, very well there, Dave.
Don't know if I'm going to have to go somewhere else to eat that day or not.
You might, you might, but he chose not to hurt your feelings while he told you.
Well, not everybody likes ludofisk.
Okay, the chair would entertain a motion at this point?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve our request from Dylan Doze, pastor of the restored church, for the use of the courthouse grounds for an international food and music festival on Sunday, September 10th, 2017, from 11:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Solosik?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 16, thank you for sitting the whole time here for us here.
Good afternoon. Oh, it is.
Yeah, okay.
Number 16 and 17, on number 16, these mobile homes, the owners were evicted, and the owner at Sunset has deemed them, well, not necessarily valueless, but they're in pretty rough shape, both of these mobiles.
It won't get better until they're gone.
That would be the case.
Yeah.
So, and then number 17, it's actually where they were abandoned and deemed valueless. So during the valueless process, the abatement process takes place. And for you, Supervisor Solosik, these are typical, the abatements that you'll see from our treasurer's office brought to you is, is the mobile homes that, you know, when they get old and beat up, as you can see, you just have, that's just the nature of mobile homes.
They live their life.
Yep. And if we don't get on top of these things, work with mobile home park owners, it becomes a monstrous paperwork nightmare for all of us. So that's why you see these from my department.
Okay.
Questions?
Again, thank you.
Excellent, thanks, guys.
Thank you. You bet. Appreciate that.
Well, we've done a lot of these over the last six years.
Item number 16 then, I would entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we adopt resolution number 2017-0018, abatement of mobile home taxes, applicable to the Iowa Code 445.16 and 648.22A.
You're second?
And I would second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt this resolution. Is there any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Solosik?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Moving on to 17 then, with the same rationale, I would entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I'd make a motion to adopt resolution number 2017-0019, abatement of mobile home taxes, Iowa Code 562B dot 27, 555C dot 1, Section 435.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Solosik?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion adopted. Okay, coming down to the end here, item 18, public forum at any time, at this time, this time is set aside for the public to make comments on topics of county business other than those listed on the agenda. No action will be taken on these topics brought up in public forum. Anyone else?
I got something.
No.
Proclamation.
We can't vote on this one.
No, we don't have to.
Oh.
Just FYI, we finished up our LED lighting project at the jail. We are done. We got a rebate check today, a rebate check of $17,065.37, which is pretty nice because they estimated it 15,200. So with the few tweaks and changes that I made to the overall project, we, the overall price came down a few hundred dollars and we saved some more money in rebate, so.
What did it give you for a payback totally?
We're saving, in electrical costs alone, $10,500 a year.
And the project was?
In the project total, just came in just under $85,000. So we're looking at right around at a six-year, 100% payback, and that doesn't include labor costs for my guys to actually go out and change a light bulb or get the lift out and drive it through the jail and change stuff. So on the T8 bulbs that we replaced, there's a 10-year warranty, and all the new fixtures, there's a 30-year warranty. So just the amount of labor time that we're cutting back is an immense savings in itself. So it was a pretty lengthy project, took a little longer than I wanted to, but happy to get it done, and we're going to see some good savings out of it.
Yep, good return on investment.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, 19 is adjournment, next regular session is March 7th, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. All business to be acted upon at that session should be submitted to the county auditor or recorder's office or the board of supervisors' office by Thursday, March 2nd, 2017, at 1:00 p.m. There being no further business to come before this board, the meeting is adjourned at 10:58. Thank you for coming.
Hey, you kept it under two hours.